You guys ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, alright, it's um six o'clock, I'll uh call the meeting to order. So um I don't know how the public uh uh speak speaker cards would work today. Uh since we don't have any public here but.
So.
Does anybody wanna kinda give a logistics on how that works?
Absolutely. Absolutely Chair, if there are any members of the public who wish to participate in the public comment section of the agenda this evening, they can through the go-to webinar program, uh there is a raise your hand feature or an ability to type in a message, so um there we are communicating via text with Mr. Miguel Ramirez Cornejo, he's hosting that on the on the other side of the location, we're respecting social distancing this evening. So um I'll text him and let them him know if there's anyone who has a comment, if they do, so if you'll just um give us a moment, let me text and find out if there is anyone.
Okay, alright, um then we'll just uh move to a roll call, Jessica.
Commissioner Charleston.
Here.
Commissioner Laney.
Present.
Commissioner Oblea.
Here.
Vice Chair Hovey.
Here.
Chair Lee.
Here.
Alright, next is pledge of allegiance, um Commissioner Charleston, would you lead us in the pledge?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The Soviet Republic, for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
Thank you.
There's a little delay there, isn't there?
Yes. Alright, public comments, um do you know, do we have anybody, do we have anybody logged in besides Commissioner Oblea?
So at this time, uh Je- Jessica can see who's logged in, if there the names will pop up on the site, but we don't we don't have any requests to make any speaks, at least that's the text message that I'm getting right now. So I would just oblige the commission if somebody comes up and wants something later that we could offer that, but at this time I have none.
Okay, and do we have chat online today or?
Actually, it is Erica. It's it's Erica Vega.
So, oh Erica is on, she's on the chat?
Yes, she is. Our city attorney is present.
Thank you, alright, then we'll move on to additions, revisions to the agenda. Um does staff have any uh additions to the agenda?
Chair and members of the commission, at this time I have none.
Okay, does the commissioners have any recommendations for additions or revisions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none.
Hearing none.
We will move on to the consent calendar. Okay, uh on the consent calendar.
Consent calendar.
Does the uh staff or members of the public or commission wanna pull any items out of the consent calendar? I am seeing none, then we will uh also solicit a motion with consent calendar.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, roll call please.
Commissioner Charleston.
Aye.
Commissioner Laney.
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hovey.
Aye.
Chair Lee.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, moving on to item number seven, presentation, uh do we have any presentations?
Yes Chair and members of the planning commission, tonight it is my esteemed pleasure to be able to introduce to you our new planning manager, Mr. Jason Kilabru, who is seated to my right. Um the city of Eastville welcomes our new planning manager, Jason Kilabru. Jason was born in Los Angeles and raised all his life in the Pasadena, California area. Jason attended California State University Fullerton and immediately started his career in planning following graduation. Since then, Jason has worked for a handful of local southern California cities and most recently as a principal planner for the county of Riverside. Jason married the love of his life, Hilda Kilabru, in twenty fifteen and moved to the inland empire in twenty sixteen. Jason and Hilda have two daughters, Hayden, born in twenty seventeen, and Harper, born last Christmas twenty nineteen. The Kilabru family also includes two boxers, Ruffio and Hook. Jason spends most of his free time with his family traveling and going on adventures. Jason is a devout Laker fan and enjoys playing basketball and golf when he gets a chance, so it's my pleasure to introduce to you, Mr. Kilabru.
Yeah, welcome Jason.
Yeah, welcome, thank you.
Welcome, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
What a way to start your city career. Alright, let's move on to item number eight, public hearings. Um I'm skipping all the uh statements about submitting a speaker card or anything like that, just let if you're if you're a member of public and if you're if you're logged in, please uh send a uh request to speak to our clerk, Jessica, um submit in uh put it in your chat box or raise your hand in the webinar, uh and we'll call on you uh for any items that are that are uh in discussion today. So um we will start item number eight point one, uh change of zone, major development review, variance and a parcel map and lot line just ran and so forth.
Alright. That item eight point one will be given by Aaron Lotliner.
Good evening Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission, for your review is application PLN nineteen dash two zero zero two six. Which is a major development review, a change of zone and a tentative parcel map for the redevelopment of a fifty five of a fifty-six acre site located at the northwest corner of Archibald and Limonite avenues. Well, my dad always said, may you live in extraordinary times, I think he wasn't planning about this week. As stated before, the project site is located at the northwest corner of Archibald and Lim- and Limonite avenues. To kinda clear up something, there is a typo between the staff report and to clear up, the cumulative total square footage on the project site is one million sixty-five thousand four hundred and six square feet with eight hundred and seven parking spaces. So um we noticed the project at the um under the amount covered in the EIR, which was I believe one million eighty. And so this doesn't change any of the analysis on the staff report, it's the cumulative tolls on the six buildings are still the same as as well as that. So the current site has been developed with an existing dairy which has three residences and it has been more or less been in agricultural uses since at least nineteen thirty-eight. It was a dairy up until the nineteen seventy, it's been a dairy since the nineteen seventies and it was agricultural uses, I believe, an orchard prior to that. This site is actually at a location of where there's a numerous amount of development going along, let's see. Well anyhow, we have the Providence industrial development to the south, the ranch at Eastville developments to the west. North of north of the project site is currently vacant, but it is part of the Ontario Ranch Development. To the east of the site, at the southeast corner of Archibald and Limonite, you have the Wal-Mart's, the future Walmart site, the northeast corner is the Merge Industrial and Retail. There we go. So the proposed development would include eight hundred and eight parking spaces and would include three hundred and that three hundred and three thousand square feet of landscaping comprising fourteen percent of the site. So as stated, it would be in a it would be a major development review to construct the buildings at the site. It would be a change of zone from A two to industrial park because of the fact um and it would also be a tentative parcel map to divide the site into six parcels. And a variance from the landscaping requirements required by ALIC because of the fact you need to be able to provide for the landing zones for distressed aircraft. And also too, this site would also involve a dedication to the central portion of the site for an extension of Limonite Avenue which would eventually link up to the extension um to the extension of Kimball Avenue, creating a linkage to the western boundary of the city. So as stated before, the existing land uses around the site, you have in um industrial uses to the west and to the south. Uh and you also have commercial and industrial uses to the east. Much of the site is under under development as the Providence uh the Providence development to the south is the only site that is more or less fully developed. The proposed project will not create any zoning um will not create any general plan zoning inconsistency as the entire site is already uh land use designated as for industrial. So here here is just to give a little more detail about about the site plan, you have the six buildings. Uh four of them will be on the north side of the street, two of them will be on the south. And a little more information about the dedication for Limonite Avenue, it will it will be four uh four lanes across and it will include a roundabout. So to get to give a little some elevation and rendering, much of the much of the buildings of the site incorporate several materials and colors using glass, steel and um and multicolored stucco. So this is building six, this would be located, the this rendering is showing I believe from if you were at the northeast corner of Archibald and Limonite looking looking southwesterly. This would be from if you were above Limonite looking westward, showing showing the project site going going through as Limonite turns to the southwest. And this would be looking north easterly from from its connection from Cucamonga Creek going north looking northeast. So here's conceptual landscaping, as stated, they they are they will be meeting the code requirements for the amount of landscaping, however, they are requesting a variance to to deal with the um because of the ALIC requirement relating to the fifty percent parking shading. And here's a little more information showing the the Limonite road dedicate uh road dedication with the with the roundabout. So the project went before ALIC in November of two thousand nineteen and was determined to be consistent with the with the ALIC compatibility plan. And and as stated before, the uh the requirement to comply with those require requirements in terms of uh no trees larger than four feet tall more or less is what necessitates the variance. And this project required an EIR under under CEQA and the EIR went for a forty-five day review period starting on on January twenty-fourth going through March tenth. Um the EIR determined um significant and unavoidable impacts related to air quality, greenhouse gases and traffic. And all applicable mitigation measures have been incorporated in the conditions of approval and it will require a statement of overriding considerations to be adopted by the council. During the comment period, staff received a comment letters from the from the following public and private entities which are which are listed, the uh the Aqua Caliente, Indians, the Riverside County Flood Control, J C S D, City of Ontario, California Resources Board, San Bernardino County Public Works and two private entities. And the copies of the comment letters are included in your packet as well as draft responses from staff and the final responses will be included as part of the final EIR. So staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council certify the environmental impact report and adopt a statement of overriding considerations for PLN nineteen dash two zero zero two six as well as adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve PLN nineteen dash two zero zero two six with all associated entitlements. Also wanted to include into the record that staff is recommending that three additional conditions of approval be added. Two of them would be to the tentative parcel map regarding easements as uh one of them regarding easements, the other regarding um that a notice from Riverside County ALIC be recorded. And then the other one would be included to the major development review which would require that um should should cold storage, a cold storage use be incorporated as part of the project that that cold storage use would um would potentially need to be reviewed pursuant to CEQA. And that concludes staff's report and we're available for any questions the planning commission may have.
Thank you, uh does the commission have any uh questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, there.
Yeah, on the requirements for the shade, the shade trees, um I know there it's reduced because of the um I hear I hear my echo back in the feed, I'm sorry. Um now if um the areas that have to be eliminated with trees, if they had trees, would it meet the fifty percent requirement?
Hi Commissioner Jason Kilabru, planning manager. So if I'm understanding your your question correctly, you're asking if it were not for the ALIC restrictions, would the variance be required for the landscaping?
No, yes, yes, would, well, in a way, I'm wondering, would they be able to meet the fifty percent requirement with the trees that are eliminated? If they were if they were to put those trees in, would that meet the fifty percent requirement?
If I'm understanding, are you saying would they be able to to put the fifty percent that's required under the under the code in an areas that are not the ALIC landing zones?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I know they have to eliminate some trees because of the ALIC requirement, but if they did have to replace, they didn't have to eliminate those trees, would that meet the fifty percent requirement? So I'm saying uh they're they're required to at least complete that. And uh so I'm sorry, I keep hearing my my voice coming back that gears, it's driving me nuts. But uh if they put the trees in, like originally they're planned to, would that meet the fifty percent requirement?
Okay, so if you're saying if they were to put put the fifty percent requirement as far as putting in those trees, well then if I'm understanding you correctly, then that would still conflict with ALIC because in terms of they.
No, no, I know what I know what and I'm not worried about that. So the elimination of those trees, uh I know they don't meet the fifty percent requirement, but if they didn't have to eliminate those trees, would they meet the fifty percent requirement?
Yes, they would.
Okay, that's what I that was wondering about. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, Mr. Charleston.
Thank you Chair, so my my questions are, I looked at the truck trips and I realized that we know there's gonna be a an impact from that and the roundabout, we already discussed that, didn't they come forward, didn't we discuss that in other meetings saying this is what we were gonna talk about? Okay, so. Echo?
If you just give us one moment, we're trying to eliminate the echo, it's either we have to mute our computer or um Commissioner Oblea will have to mute the volume on his, so we're trying to figure that.
Okay, uh let's see, let me see if I can turn my mic off. Is my mic up, do you hear me? No.
We can hear you, we believe it is Commissioner Oblea, is that you would have to turn your mic down.
Okay, how about now?
That sounds better on this end, is it better for you?
Aye, Steve.
Okay, so my my I guess my question is, is when I read the truck trips and I looked at the impact and we go all the way out to twenty forty and at some point, we're never gonna be where we need to be at. So there's no way to mitigate for any of this, as I'm reading this.
Correct, that's.
This isn't the only project that this happens on, is what the point I'm trying to make. This happens all the time, until we get to a version of maybe where it was all electric vehicles or something different, we cannot get past this.
Yeah, my understanding of that is you're talking about with the especially the impact on Helman and Kimball avenues, that's that's the one.
That's where they highlighted, yes.
Correct, and so in that respect, as far as with development going forward, as as that intersection starts to as as this project starts to go get built out as well as the projects to the west, yes, it creates an unforeseeable in it creates an unforeseeable impact.
Okay, so I guess my point in this is, as I read through more and more stuff, I'm looking at air quality. So if I look at AQ dash two dash four, it encourages the use of uh energy efficient trucks. And then AQ dash one says discourages by posting five uh five minute idling policy. Well then when I read the their conditions, it had a condition in there again where it discourages, but we don't hold it as a condition. And I'm I guess my question is, why can't we make that a condition to where you, you know, do not idle your truck, not discourage it, but say you may not idle your truck more than five minutes, the state requires that on uproad equipment right now. So why couldn't we do that for on-road equipment, if they're gonna be sitting in the yard and it's a distribution facility? I would think we could improve that at some point by not letting them say encourage or discourage, but say it is gonna be a condition, you they they may not do that because you can't enforce, we discouraged and we told them not to, but they just ignored me. So that that's that's really what I was trying to get to on this.
Okay, any other questions?
I did have a question about this roundabout, um I know that we discussed it before, but I didn't realize that it was just gonna go move forward. Um I think that we had a lot of questions about the roundabout at the last meeting and um as to whether or not it was going to be um the best option for that intersection and we also talked about pedestrians crossing and how that they how they would cross. Um and I don't remember there being any resolution to that.
Mr. Bill, will you pop up and give them some background about that, please?
Thank you, yeah, this item was taken to council after it went to planning commission and they they provided direction on it. And and so that but to answer the your question too is um it will be designed and so they'll the um the developer is going through the process to design it and has professionals and then um city staff will also review it to make sure that those items are addressed. So it'll have the correct um design for speed and will also address pedestrians.
And the center, there will be something pretty large in the middle of it, so people don't.
Yeah, that'll that'll also be part of the design, yeah, I think maybe a statue of you or something like that.
No. A dog will do.
Okay, okay.
You're welcome. Alright, any other questions? So I have a couple of questions, uh so kind of following up on Commissioner Charleston's question of do we do we have an idling idling ordinance currently in the city?
There's not an idling ordinance in our zoning ordinance nor in our general plan at this time.
Okay, so maybe that's something if we do an ordinance update, something to think about in the future.
I was also gonna say, I just checked, um Peter Miniger from Michael Baker International, who's our who kind of interfaces on our environment project, he should be on the on the webinar call as well. So then he may be able to, as well as Christine Donahue from Rincon Rincon Consultants, who they have helped prepare the environmental impact report. So I'm not sure if they can hear us, but we can also, they they can also chime in if we if if you have questions.
Sure, I I I will have questions on the ER as well, but um on the on the map, I was kinda seeing it, what's the land use uh north of, so in Ontario, what's the land use across there? What what are they proposing?
See, I'd actually have to look into that and I get back, I can look into that and clarify, to my understanding it is residential, but I wanna double check that to to verify.
Okay, cuz that.
I would be surprised, I'm sorry, I'd be surprised if it's residential because it's all commercial distribution centers to the north, there would only be one smart small parcel in the way of that.
There are big buildings.
Big buildings, yeah.
It's near where the Ontario Monument is.
Yeah.
Um right there, sort of uh in the corner to the.
Okay, so so my concern is that if it's uh other land industrial or industrial buildings, that's fine. Um but if it's residential, then I think we should be kinda consistent with what we conditioned on the uh the across the street where Sprouts is going, so those land industrial, cuz we had a lengthy discussion on how those buildings should be uh kinda situated because of impacts to the residents in in Ontario. So I think we should be mindful of that if 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 it's residential, so if we can double check on that, that'll be great. If it's land industrial, I I it's fine. Um and then my other question was um are we gonna address, this is more of a technical question, it's kinda annoying that we have those zoning parcels there uh with ag that are still remaining, are we gonna fix those designations in the public?
Hi, this is Jason Kilabru, and um not with this project, but moving forward, will we do consistency if we do do any changes to with Eastville twenty forty and follow up with any type of consistency, that would be a city um effort where we can clean that up.
Okay, so let's make sure that we clean up those slivers to the north and and to the to the east and west. Alright, um where are my other questions? Okay, oh and the other ones are uh uh EIR related questions. And I'll I'll ask that a little later after uh when we're deliberating, but do we have any?
Chair, I have one more question. When when we talked about the roundabout, uh I guess my question is, is is this gonna be the furthest east section of property before you actually come into Eastville then? Is it gateway, the roundabout is gonna be the gateway, that's my question.
No, cuz actually when you cross Cucamonga Creek, then you would it would then cross into a portion of the ranch development and that would be effectively the the ranch development to the west is the last port uh development.
So are we talking a quarter mile away, a half a mile away? I mean, if we wanna put something in the middle of that roundabout, why wouldn't we put a Eastville monument of some kind showing that you're in our city now?
Monumentation is a part of, will be a part of the design.
Will be part of this, I I didn't read it anywhere as well, it was.
Yeah, because the uh street design comes after, we have to get through this environmental impact report and then the major development plan review and then the street improvement plans and the street design plans are capital improve, well, some will be done with development, some will be.
We can tag the monument requirement that we would like with the street design? At that time? There is one over by Helman, you're right.
Yeah, there's so there's monumentation monument at the actual gateway.
Right, 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 I'm familiar, you're right, so it would be pretty redundant to put another one right there then. Okay, that answered my question, thank you.
Is Commissioner Oblea muted?
I am, I can unmute, I unmuted when I'm on a tongue, so you'll get ring back.
Alright, um do we have, do we have anybody online that wishes to uh speak on the item?
We do have the applicant, the applicant and then Grant Ross and also John Shardlow on behalf of the applicant that we can.
Okay, then I'll open up the public hearing. So whoever is ready to speak.
We'll start with John Shardlow.
So can you guys hear me, this is Jonathan.
Yes.
Okay, so you know, my preference would be to let Grant go first, but while I'm on, let me just address two quick um comments. So with respect to the five minute idling, that's also state law for heavy duty trucks, so that's required. I think the mitigation measure related to that is to encourage. I think the mitigation measure related to that is to encourage compliance with that by posting signs and informing operators of the site to limit the five minutes. So it's not simply just encouraging. It's an additional requirement to make sure that that requirement is is known and complied with. And then with respect to the property to the north in Ontario, that's actually actively being constructed. If you drive by today, you can see approximately two million square feet of industrial directly to the north. There's not residential adjacent in Ontario to the north. So I just wanted to clear up those two points and then let Grant speak.
Okay, we now have Grant Ross.
Can you guys hear me right now?
Yes. Grant, go ahead.
Grant, are you there?
Grant drop off.
I think you may have needed your phone, Grant.
Is Grant talking to himself? Okay, um, do you have anyone else?
John Shardlow has requested to speak for Grant Ross.
Okay.
John, you're on.
Thank you very much. So, you know, on behalf of Grant, we did talk about the high points that we wanted to discuss in the presentation. Obviously Orbit and Homestead are excited about the investment in this project in Eastvale. They've developed, you know, the merge or currently developing the merge. They've developed the Providence project to the south. So they're they're very interested in continuing forward being a partner with the city of Eastvale. Thank you to staff and obviously the planning commission today to make sure that this project could go forward for consideration tonight. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes to get to the the spot. You know, we think this site is perfect for light industrial manufacturing because it's located adjacent to the Ontario Airport, the fifteen, the sixty freeway. And that the site is sandwiched in between existing and planned industrial. You know, as detailed in the project EIR, the project would generate and build out over a thousand jobs. And obviously, there's, you know, direct and indirect economic benefits such as an increased property tax basis for the site, which will flow to the city's general fund. With respect to the construction jobs, Homestead is again partnering with the general contractor who utilizes union labor and whose experience and expertise is remarkable. It's the same general contractor on the merge. And then obviously, I think a key point for the city and us on behalf of the Homestead project is that we have some extensive roadway improvements which are the extension of Light Night Avenue all the way to the the creek. And so we think that's a huge it's a huge cost. We think it's a huge investment for the city and, you know, developers taking that on. So, you know, given the unique circumstances of tonight, you know, we don't have all of our technical consultants and supporters. But based on the record before you, we would urge you and request that you adopt the planning staff's recommendation to approve the project or recommend approving the project to city council.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, do we have anyone else?
We have received one comment.
Okay.
It's from Steve Popcorn. Steve Popcorn with Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance. He said, we have submitted a comment letter to the environmental impact report. Our letter identifies several deficiencies with the EIR. The deficiencies include but are not limited to the project description, population and housing, air quality, transportation and traffic, noise, hazards and hazardous materials. The city's elected and appointed officials have the obligation to protect the citizens of this city from environmental and social injustice to protect the environment we all share and live in and to invite and to make environmentally responsible development decisions. We stand by our comment letter and we believe the EIR is flawed. In closing, we call on the commission to be a leader of the mentioned issues and be the first line of defense for our citizenry and environment. Only by working together can we continue to be excellent stewards of our environment and outstanding stewards to our citizens and each other.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
That was it, but for the record, we did receive two comment letters and three other comments of which were emailed to you and are provided on the dais.
Okay, thank you. So I actually have questions before I close that close the public hearing on on that EIR. And I actually read the the comment letter from Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance. And I and there's a couple of couple of sections in there that they're challenging on the the quantification and the methodology of it. Has staff kind of looked at those numbers and and addressed the inconsistency that they're claiming? Because I I do I I do see there valid points. You know, I I hate to see an environmental document that has the inconsistency between the plan and the and and the actual environmental analysis that was done.
Thank you, Chair. We do have some of our our technical personnel that is on the call. So at this time, I would open the floor for Peter or Christine if you guys are available.
Christine, you are now available to speak.
Okay, good evening. So I'd be happy to address that. I can also address some of the earlier remarks. Beginning with the quantitative and the methodology. It's pretty common that in the course of review of a project, there's minor refinements. In this case, we looked at a maximum square footage for evaluation purposes. The actual square footage went down. So what you're looking at now is slightly reduced compared to what we looked at in PIR. It's a fairly negligible difference, but in the case we have over evacuated the impact for the project. I did want to mention with respect to the traffic impact. So the EIR identifies a significant and possible impact. Not because those impacts can't be mitigated, but the timing of the mitigation is unsure because it's not yet progressed. So this primarily comes into play with your fair share contribution and and things like that. So they're mitigable, but because of the uncertainty with regard to timing, we went ahead and identified a significant.
And Christine, in regards to, so I'm looking at their transportation and traffic comment. They're specifically addressing the proposal of seven buildings versus six buildings. Does that make any difference?
It really doesn't. We're still looking at the same number of driveways. We've still accounted for an appropriate square footage which directly translates to truck trip which is your primary driver of impacts on this project.
Okay. Sure.
Sure.
So can you elaborate just a little bit more on where you said it could be mitigated, but it's timing? Because that was one of my first questions. Is there any way to mitigate? And normally you can't. We we run into this issue all the time. So can you explain that a little better, please?
So that's with respect to the traffic impact?
Yes.
They can all be mitigated through the contribution of fair share mitigation. Some improvements are already programmed, planned in the works. Other improvements are further out in the transportation plans. So we don't know when they'll be implemented.
But but the bottom.
Because of that, we don't know.
Uh, Christine? So the bottom line is though.
Yes.
They are they are paying their fair share of the transportation improvements, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just it's just the phasing and when when those come online is is the main question.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner?
Thank you, Christine.
All right, then I will close the public hearing. And is there any comments from the commission?
I would have one question for legal. So when we get letters of opposition, this is not new. We we get these on lots of projects. But has legal looked at it clearly and tried to determine the risk we have? I mean, I feel satisfied, but I want to make sure legal is satisfied too.
So so I can speak to that. So as part of the the AR process, this is very typical. And so the next phase of this, which you guys have gotten the draft to, would be the response to comments, which would be vetted through not only staff but also legal. And then that would be incorporated into a final EIR that would be presented to the city council.
And this is Erica Vig. That's accurate. And we've been working with staff on the environmental review for this project.
So Erica, this is Josh. I want to ask you about addressing seven forty three issues. Because it's it's very minimal in this project in in their EIR. I know it's not July yet, but do you think it's it's adequate enough at this point?
So we don't thresholds, we don't have. And with the timing of EIR had its shown, I think that we are in a good position still relying on the level of service standard.
Okay, so we don't need to ask a little bit more analysis down on the seven forty three, you think?
You could be asked for it, but I think from a legal standpoint, the analysis matches the applicable legal requirements at the time the NLP was was circulated and a draft EIR was circulated for comment.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there any more comments? Commissioner Obly, do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Oh, go ahead, please.
This is regarding major development review. Could you bring back up the architect rendering of the view of the buildings from Limonite looking west? Limonite and Archibald? That's looking westbound from man, that cross street is Archibald, I'm assuming.
Correct, Chair. I mean, it was correct, Mr. Obly.
Yes, that building on the right, it's right there, that corner, that architecture, that looks kind of plain and dull for a for an intersection, major intersection like that. I think something needs to be done with that. I don't know why they chose to just do a plain corner like that. I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel about that.
Building to the right of the screen.
Yes.
Commissioner, if if it would please the commission, we can work with the applicant to add some treatment or additional landscaping and, you know, per ALOC requirements at that corner to give some more prominence.
To make it look like a major entry to the building rather than just a corner there.
Understood. We'll we'll take that into account and work with the applicant.
Well, is applicant Willie?
Grant, you are on the line.
Okay, I'll I'll open up the.
Yeah, I'm hearing you.
Go ahead, Grant.
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Go ahead, Josh, you could.
Yeah, so the rendering that we we're currently looking at, you see that stark difference between the the building on the left, the corner, and then the the building on the right? So
Yeah.
Improving that corner section of it, is that something that's doable?
Yeah, yeah, we could do that.
Okay, so Larry, are you satisfied that we, you know, that to have applicant work with the staff on that one?
Yeah, if there's a could be a real improvement, yeah, I'll be satisfied.
Okay. All right, any other any other questions, Larry?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Oh. I just want to say one thing. Sorry, I we cannot hear on the like where we could hook up with Wi-Fi. Jonathan Shardlow gave a good overview of the entire project that we have we have discussed before. We just want to express our sacrifices that you guys make within challenging times. And we offer all of our that we have at our disposal. Anything that the city needs relative and everything else going on. The only comment I'd make regarding the truck idling condition is it's our understanding that it's that you can idle beyond five minutes. And to the extent we've gotten the condition that's going to run with the property, we just want the ability that technology continues to advance for electronic emission free trucks that the condition doesn't daddle on the law or, you know, and it's necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Grant. I will close.
Mister Chair, John Shardlow had a comment. He is on the line.
Yeah, John.
So I just included the language in the text chat. And so if there's an echo, obviously, the city clerk could read it better, but I just wanted to note that there is a case on point, Citizens for Positive Growth, that said that. that, that, uh, a seven forty-three analysis, uh, is not required. Um, although it's not required, the project did analyze vehicle miles traveled in its energy conservation section.
Yeah, yes, I, I did see that. Yeah, my comment was, was that enough? And, and Erica said yes, for now. So I, I think I'm satisfied with that answer. All right. Do we have any more folks wanting to speak?
No, we have not received any more requests.
All right, then I'll close the public hearing again. And any more comments from the commission? If not, then I'll, I will solicit a motion.
Motion to approve? Now, is there any added language? We have the three additional A-Luck easement, cold storage. And then was the statement of override, is that part of what we're talking about now or not now? What three things did we have to add to it?
So at, at this point, it would be four things. So we would add the architecture as well. And then we, we would have the, um, the two conditions for the final map. And then we would add the, um, I think Aaron has, has the language.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're putting forth the right thing.
Got you Chair Carlson. So it would be one condition, two conditions re- on the parcel map. One of them dealing with the applicant shall record appropriate easements and agreements for the construction and maintenance of water quality to meet the storm water permit and water quality management plan requirements. The other one would be a note, that the, a notice from Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission noting that the site's location near the Chino Airport shall be recorded, which is pursuant to the A-Luck conditions. The third one would be on the major, um, the major development review, which would refer to the cold storage that you talked about, that should, the project is not designed, um, nor is, nor is a cold storage used proposed as part of this. But should one come in the future, it would be required to go under uh, any applicable analysis pursuant to sequel or, uh, other policies or other laws. And then also as, as Planning Manager Killabru mentioned, the, uh, comment that the building one at the northwest corner of Archibald and Limonite shall. Correct.
That, that is my motion to approve.
Okay, and are we taking both actions together? Is it? Uh, as far as the EIR? Um, and then the, uh, I think it's the major development review. I mean, is the motion for both?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll take both of them. Do I, do I hear a second?
A second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Trelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hovey?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commission business. Um, item nine point one, one year review of the drive-through at El Pollo Loco.
Yes Chair.
Yes, that'll be given by, uh, Aaron, there he is. Uh, he, oh, excuse me, Alan Limb will be giving that. Sorry, I'm looking at Aaron saying Alan, forgive me. Uh, so the floor is yours sir.
All right. Good evening Chair and Commissioners. Um, uh, with the special circumstances of, of tonight, we're going to be doing a, a summary of tonight's presentation. Uh, we did have a presentation ready if you do, um, have further questions. Um, there has been a condition of approval which had been placed, uh, during the original entitlement for the one year review, uh, for a one year review on El Pollo Loco's drive-through operation. Um, currently there have been no complaints and there has been no issues with the queuing. Uh, staff recommends that no action is needed for the drive-through and that staff is more than willing to answer any questions, concerns you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comments?
We have not received any requests to speak, but for the record, we did receive one comment from the applicant which had been emailed to you and also provided on the dais.
Okay, thank you. Um, does the commission have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. All right, then I will. We do need a motion, right? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Or what are we making a motion on, just to approve that we reviewed it where it's acceptable?
Yes, that we, we, yeah, that condition no longer applies now, right?
We, our, our recommendation, um, as it reads is that, uh, determine that no changes to the conditions of approval are needed for the El Pollo Loco drive-through operation.
That, that's my motion, yeah, no changes are needed, approved.
Correct.
Sorry. Roll call please.
Commissioner Trelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Oblea?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hovey?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Right. Next item is nine point two, um, track map, three zero eight one seven.
Yes, and Mr. William Hemsley will give that report to you this evening.
Thank you, this item is related to track thirty-eight seventeen, lots two seventy-two, suit two seventy-three, uh, for dedication to rideaway. The, uh, track was dedicated or, um, made into a map on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and four, when the city was a county. And these two lots, um, were part of the open space and the landscaping that was part of the project is, um, part of the CFD, which is being maintained by J C S D at this time. And, uh, there's two lots. Um, lot two seventy-three has two APN numbers. It's south of Schleisman Road, west of Hamner Avenue. And that's like a sliver for landscaping. Lot two seventy-two is north of the, the tract. Um, also south of Schleisman Road. And so, um, typically, uh, when this is taken to counties or councils, the open space is dedicated. Um, and so that just for some reason didn't happen, so we're recommending that, uh, the city accept it in their request for planning commission. Say you make a determination for general point consistency for acceptance of the open space lots two seventy-two and two seventy-three. And review and provide comments related to the acquisition of those two same lots. That concludes my report, be happy to respond, any questions?
Any questions?
Mister Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner?
I think I need to recuse myself from this, um, item. I, I live near the corner of.
Okay.
And, uh, that might be too close, but I would like to come back after this is over. I want to make the commissioners' communication.
Absolutely, so how? Yeah, so how does he recuse himself in this?
He can mute, mute me.
Okay, mute him.
He can simply do so by making that statement and then not vote.
Yes.
Okay. Any?
Cause you can't see me anyways.
Um, any questions to staff? From the commission, anyone? Nope, no questions? Any public, um, speakers on this item?
No, we have not received any requests.
Okay. All right. Um, any comments? Any questions? Hear none. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Laney?
Determination for general plan. General plan consistency.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Roll call please.
Commissioner Trelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hovey?
Aye.
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. All right, so that, um, let's bring Commissioner Oblea back in.
I'm back.
Okay. Uh, I, I, item ten, city staff report. Um, does the staff any, staff any presentation reports?
I just want to thank you for your patience with us and your creativity and your openness to take on a new skill as we implemented the go-to webinar for, uh, our planning commission meeting this evening. So I wish to extend, uh, thanks and also a well-deserved for Jason Killabru and Miguel Ramirez Miguelno for all of their hard work in bringing this to you this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Commission communications. Uh, I will call on Commissioner Oblea first.
Thank you. Uh, just a little comment on, uh, this webinar. Um, hearing it from my point of view and probably other people that were listening in, there's a real bad echo when this is happening, especially when they're talking really fast. It, it, everything's talking over each other, so there's a speaker in the background in your, in the hall there that, uh, it's feeding back into the microphones. And we hear a real bad echo, some to the point where some of them wasn't understandable. So I think that needs to be addressed if we are to do this again. Um, but other than that, I think it went pretty smoothly.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you Larry.
Thank you Larry.
Oh, Commissioner Laney?
Um, just the only thing I have is that, uh, yesterday, the Southern California Association of Governments announced that they were canceling the upcoming regional conference and general assembly. So, uh, put it on your calendar for next year.
I know.
Hopefully COVID nineteen is dead by then.
We're all planning on going this year. I know. Ah, I was bummed. But that's the new life that we have to live in now. So, uh, yeah, I just want to say, uh, I, I think, given the circumstances, this worked out. Um, uh, thanks to staff, uh, your hard work on this, thank you. Um, and also, you know, stay safe. I mean, it's, it's, it's tough out there. It's only going to get worse, looks like, so, uh, just, just stay safe. If you, if the other commissioners don't have any other?
I, I guess I, I. One, one thing I would just want to reaffirm, you know, congratulations, welcome aboard. Uh, this is a strange time. Uh, yesterday, in a ten-hour day, I was on the phone six hours with COVID nineteen, uh, conference calls for the whole state of California and for Arizona. We had all senior managers on thinking about all the things we have no idea about. And how do you deal with this? And we're sending people everywhere, can't find bleach, can't find sanitizers. The CDC puts out how you should deal with this, but yet you can't buy any products. So right now, we're having products shipped in from South Carolina from one of our distributors and having it overnighted or two-day shipped because we can't find the things we're supposed to do to follow the CDC recommendations. So this is seriously weird times. But I don't want that to interfere with you coming on board. We're going to still try to move business, we proved that today, that we're still going to try to move forward, but we are going to have to change the way we do it because they're expecting this to last anywhere from three, uh, three weeks to, to two months. They don't know until flu season stops, so welcome.
Thank you Chair. Or thank you Commissioner.
All right. With that, I will adjourn the meeting to the next scheduled meeting, uh, March eighteenth, uh, at six PM. Meeting adjourned. No, it won't be March eighteenth. What is? I'm being a little bit.